Okay, it's seven o'clock. This is the Athens City Council meeting usually begins at 7:30. Tonight at seven o'clock, we have a public hearing about amending the city zoning code regarding sign regulations. I believe the Service Safety Director Paula Horan Mosley is going to talk to us about that. This is a public, this is a public hearing, so we do have a sign-in list that's going around among the audience. Please sign in.
You can put it on.
We need to know everybody who's here. Whether you're, whether you're speaking or not, please. Ms. Mosley.
Oops. Not quite ready for prime time. Uh, no, yeah.
So many recalls.
We've been talking about signs for a really, really, really long time, and committees, more than one has been convened, and we are finally to the point where the Planning Commission has recommended these changes to the sign regulations to City Council. I believe it would be up for third reading for adoption tonight, pending what we hear from the public and the issues. Most of this arose from the rental properties proliferation of signage and no real uniformity. So, a committee was convened of neighborhood association members, citizens generally, and property, rental property owners who came and brought back to us that they indeed do like what is deemed a property management sign. It's never been allowed before in code. It means a sign identifying the person, business, et cetera, responsible for that specific rental property. Talked about real estate signs and adding the term rental sign, a temporary sign identifying availability of a rental property, with an entire rental property management sign section, D-E-A-F-G-H five and corresponding restrictions in there. The maximum size of the sign is 1.5 square feet. It can be attached next to the front door or visible from in front of the house on the first floor. Signs must come down by October 15th of an OU academic school year in an R1 zone only. Sign may remain up or be placed after that date, October 15th, if a unit, not the bedroom, if the unit is not yet rented for that current academic year or following academic year. Once again, R1 only. Sign must state when the rental is available, if up after October 15th, R1 zone only. Sign must be removed two weeks after a lease is signed, again in the R1. No yard signs, no brochure boxes. Any coloring, lettering, numbering seem to be acceptable. They may not be neon metallic reflective illuminated moving or flashing. We don't have flashing signs in the city. Well, we do, but when we catch them. Exterior signs are not permissible if there's a window sign on the interior of the property. Interior sign need the same requirement as exterior. I did receive a public comment from a property owner who felt that their, what they deemed non-intrusive interior signs should be able to be left alone. And no other form of rental or property management signage is permissible, and if the property is for sale and for rent, rental sign must comply with the rental sign regulations. From there, again, there were some number of additional changes. Property management signs, again, are addressed on page, what I deem page eight. But I would say, do you feel Beverly, that that seemed to be the, the most contentious issue of what we tried to come to, which is a uniformity on rental signs and the placement thereof?
Okay. Does anybody else want to speak right now in general about the sign ordinance? If you do, if you do, I'm sorry, please come up to the podium. Tell us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm June Sefranik at 34 Groverner Street, and I was part of that sign committee. And the only thing that was, it came down to the wire was on how, the size of it. And we had our code director try to say that we had to go by the size of sign that was sold in the store. Well, we made that clear, that the size of the sign that was sold in the store was the size that the, being bought. And there are several of us on that, on our street, on Groverner Street, and I'm going to guess if there's several on ours. There are on some of the other neighborhoods, maybe not on Columbus Road, but some of the inner neighborhoods that are opposed to it even being that big. We can get, our lots are very small on Groverner. Our houses are close to the street for the most part. We can read a sign that is one square foot, and it's bad enough, we have to have a one square foot. We even have some very good landlords who do, do not put rental signs up. Property rents without signs. And at that meeting, when I objected and I was not willing to vote to approve it, I was told to vote to approve it, to get it here in front of council, because council then could act on that very item. And yes, it was the landlords that opposed. Now, I'm willing to meet on several things, and I try to be a good neighbor. But city planning was lagging for years, apparently, that they let an R1 neighborhood have so many rentals. And with a little luck, we'll take it back, or your inner city is going to look just about as degenerated as the one, the areas very close in uptown. And I do remember this quaint town from the 1960s, when on Congress Street, the first block coming up from West Union where the church is, those were residential homes, because I babysat in the home next to the church as a student here. And it was quaint, and it was neat. And I think we need to do everything we can to keep our inner part of our city looking nice and neat. I've been to Oberlin, which granted, has a smaller college, but their neighborhoods are neat. And because they have some rentals in there, they are not rundown looking. And I think we need to think of our town, and we need to think of what we're making it look like, and we need to think of how many rentals we get into our neighborhoods, and what we are going to demand to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sefranik. Ms. Sefranik, could I ask you a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
You were originally speaking about the size of signs.
Yes.
You are, you are proposing one, one square foot or smaller?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
When, at the Planning Commission, the recommendation that was originally brought to us from the sign committee was for two square feet. And there were indeed objections made about the signage. There are certain people who don't want signs at all, and, and the 1.5 square feet was what was reached as a compromise. There was a motion made at the Planning Commission to reduce to one square foot, and they failed to have a second, so.
I have heard from several people who were involved with, with this discussion that there were many compromises. Practically nobody got exactly what they wanted. Do we have other people who would like to speak? Please come to the podium. And I should have said that we do have a limit of three minutes, but.
Tony Ferrian.
I'm sorry, go.
Tony Ferrian.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was part of that committee, and I thought we did a wonderful job together. And as you said, this is what you had heard from other people, but I'll share my experience because that way I know that I was there, and you guys know that I was there. There were many compromises at that meeting. And we sat through a good seven, eight meetings to come to this compromise. I do not personally remember anybody being bullied into any, any situation that might arise. But what I would like to say is, we did come to the agreement of two square feet. And this is actually the first that I've heard of 1.5 square feet, which, adding to another compromise, I'm fine with that. Because there was a lot of compromises, and there was a lot of votes, and we did that democratically. And for anybody who got left out of the vote or got on the short side of it, everybody, I, at that, I was at these meetings, thought, well, okay, I lost this side of what I was looking to do. So we did this democratically by taking votes. And the majority, every time we came to a conclusion, the majority was what, was what we went with. So it was the people that were in the minority that, you know, were maybe unhappy, but there was plenty of things I was unhappy with, too. But coming into the grand scheme of things, we came up with something that we could all compromise on, and that was my experience. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience wanting to speak at this time?
Did I just give a little 30 seconds?
Thirty seconds, yeah.
We compromised on a lot of things, and I'm not going to go into the things I compromised on. But the one thing that I stood firm on, our signs do not need to be that big. I've observed them in larger cities, and they are not. And they show up, and they tell the story of what there is to rent, and you don't have to be, you know, you just don't have to paste it bad.
Thank you. Not even 30 seconds. Other speakers at this time? Ms. Mosley, did you want to add anything else?
Just that, as you're aware, that people came together to bring forth this proposal. Signs have been talked about for a long time, and yes, the property owners who are in rental management made a number of concessions as to neighborhood residents to at least reach this point, so.
This, this ordinance is up for third reading tonight at council. And if it should pass, it would, it would come into effect, I'm not, 30 days after that, and would be, would begin to be enforced. If we see problems with it, it can come back to the Planning Commission and, and the administration and City Council again. Council members have anything to say at this time?
Two questions that I have. One of them would be from the first time we went through the discussion, and on page six, I have notes for item five, and I think it may be 5.2, where it says that it's unresolved. If the house is not rented, may want to require the Realtor or landlord to report to the code office. Was any, was anything worked out about that detail, or is that something that's an administrative that could be worked out later?
Do you have pages? Does it say six?
Mine says six, and this is under illumination, this is actually under standards for signs, so it's H five, sub, subunit two. That's where I wrote the notes next to it. Oh, it's six, number six. Yeah, it would be number six.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing that. Beverly, do you have it?
Yeah, could I speak to it?
Please, please.
And then one other, we'll go ahead and speak to that, or get ready to, and then the other, the only other thing was the table on the very last page. It says R1, R2, the nameplate, the size of it is two. Am I reading that, and should it be 1.5?
Beverly did, did point that out to me tonight, that that should be, the table should be changed.
So we can correct that as a typo probably with the ordinance.
Be one and a half to two then. Beverly, plan again, 132 North Lancaster Street. Yes, I'm the one who raised that issue, Chris, in section H five, sub point six. Sign must be removed two weeks after a lease is signed. I think that's the point we're on. And then if, if the unit isn't rented yet, does the landlord or the manager have to go back to the, the code officer to get permission to, for an extension of that sign? And that wasn't resolved. Don Paskey didn't think he had to do that, but I suggested that you at least consider it, because I think it would be a, just one more safety feature, so that signs won't be left up willy-nilly. They'd have to go through just a simple request to Paskey, it seems to me, would do, to allow an extension. Yes, and on the table, I think that table on page 14 should say one and a half to two, because the one and a half would cover R1, and two would cover R2. I, I want to, I'm not going to argue about whether the signs should be one square foot or one and a half square feet. I'm willing to go with the compromise of one and a half square feet. My main concern is that this new ordinance be enforced, and I'm really concerned about, for example, having posts removed, posts which are probably footed in concrete by now and have signs hanging off them. They must go according to this section H, as you see, and, and multiple signs, signs on, on different sides of a house, for example. We, we want to limit these signs to just one per house, per building. So I'm, I think, I think the larger issues are these excess signs and enforcement, once this is adopted, so that we really get those excess signs cleared out. One square foot or one and a half square feet doesn't matter much to me, as, nearly as much as getting this enforced. And I've already heard a couple of skeptical comments to the effect that, well, nothing's going to change anyway, let's make it happen, one way or the other. Thank you.
Yes.
We, at discussion at the Planning Commission level and also with John Paskey, the code director, the adding an additional requirement that they have to go back, so there's no permit, it seemed to be an administrative burden. The code officers are out there patrolling, and they, they should be able to be watching. After October 15th, the eyes are going to be out there, so. In addition, one thing that I failed to include in this, and this is a recommendation from some time ago, but at this time bringing forth the signs, is we actually increased the sign, which require the size for the real estate signs. They've gone from five feet to 6.2 square feet in single-faced sign area, and reduced their height to 4.5 feet height, so.
Okay, just a second. Remember nicely, are your questions answered?
Those were answered, thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, sir. Before you begin speaking, I just want to, a few other people have come in since the hearing began. Would you please sign in whether or not you're going to speak in this hearing or not? We just need to know who was here. Thank you, I'm sorry.
On the question of, Jill Sefranik, 34 Groverner Street.
Thank you.
On the question of whether a landlord must go back to the code office after the October 15th, I guess it's, I'm not sure whether it's October 15th or two weeks after, but it's a burden on the landlord, and I don't know what is meant, not clear to me what is meant by a burden, administrative burden. It's a burden on the code office, but my concern would be that if it just continues, it's really difficult to enforce, because then you almost have to walk up and look in the windows, is it rented or isn't it rented? And so, yeah, I, I think it's, it's a burden of, but it's a worthwhile burden in order to get the thing enforced, I think that. So that's my take on that. On the one fair square, fair square foot thing, my understanding is that when I went through Planning Commission, that the mayor actually made the motion for one square foot, and so, hey, go with one square foot and, and support the mayor.
Thank you, good for that.
Once again, I guess I want to clarify, we all know we live in Athens, and, you know, we have the transient student population. Leases are signed a year in advance. The semester change is going to change things, so actually stuck with the October 15th date, thinking that'd be what, only 60 days, and I think they're more used to a, like a 90-day period or what have you at this time. And it's, once the lease is signed, we all agreed for the following year. There will be tenants in a home while they're leasing for the next academic year. So that's where it gets a little bit, if you go up and you see somebody's there, that doesn't necessarily answer whether or not their lease is signed for the following year.
Again, if this is passed by City Council, and we do have enough members present tonight to pass it, I'm assuming that more people will come, but, so, then this question of enforcement becomes an administrator's job, a resident's job, a council member's job to make sure that this enforcement process does actually work. Some say yes, some say no. This is, this is our best effort offering here, and we need to see how it goes. Ms. Sefranik, another 30-second one?
October 15th.
Well, that's kind of where you were before, so.
June Sefranik, 34 Groverner Street, and I think a simple solution to when, whether they get the sign down is that they send a piece of paper to the code office that says the rental date, and it will be up to the code office to take care of it. If that date does not coincide, and the neighbors, you know, will probably know if there's, you know, something to report that isn't, isn't balanced there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council members?
Just a comment to thank everybody. I know it's been a long process, and it's taken a lot of effort, and I know that the sign regulations have come up as a concern, you know, probably dating back to 1999, 2000 at least, and probably maybe even before that, but when I would go to Planning Commission meetings. So just want to thank everybody for the efforts on it.
Can you start to say something?
Yeah, just on the enforcement issue, it really seems like it's going to come down to the landlord deciding to let the city know that it's rented or taking the sign down voluntarily, because currently, there's no requirement, you know, as soon as a property is leased, we don't expect the landlord to notify the city. And so it seems to me that the owners will be on the landlord to let us know that it's rented for the next academic year by taking the sign down. I don't see any other way to really, to do it the way it's, the way this is, is written. It just doesn't seem there's any other possibility unless I'm missing something. Except, I mean, what's the landlord-tenant agreement do?
I'm sorry. I get the landlord-tenant form, but the dates don't necessarily coincide, so I believe they have until the end of September in order to submit it for the current year. But again, we're having the October 15th target date in there, that's when the sweep can happen, the sign sweep, along with our clean sweep that's ongoing, so.
There's where we hope to see the enforcement. Ms. Sefranik?
Beverly, sign again, again. Yeah, I would like to see some kind of reporting, because remember, the code office or the city does not actually even have to keep copies of leases, as I understand it. So you really don't have a, you know, firm date on a piece of paper, as far as I know. So I still would support some kind of reporting. And my second comment is, I assume that even though the Planning Commission has forwarded this version, you could amend it yet further tonight. Is that right? So you could add a clause asking for some kind of check by the, by the code office, however you want to do it.
It is 7:26. We're going to adjourn this public hearing, resume City Council at 7:30. So we've got four minutes to run around. It's on or about 7:30 on Monday, November 21st, 2011. This is a regular meeting of Athens City Council. We do have a quorum, a president, of council members. If you notice, President Bias is sitting in the mayor's chair, the mayor is out of town, so in that situation, he assumes the duties of the mayor, and I, as council member, assume the duties of president of council. So however, I will be kind of running the meeting, but I'll also be voting on issues that come before us. So we do have a quorum, we've established that. I don't have any communications that I want to introduce. Mr. Bias, did you?
Mayor Bias.
Mayor Bias, I'm sorry.
I would like to.
Member Bias, yes.
Possibly the last one. I do want to make sure that everybody is reminded that beginning Friday after Thanksgiving until midnight on January 31st, there is going to be free parking uptown to encourage people to shop Athens, and so.
Is it parking, free parking everywhere?
Till January 1st, what did I say?
Sorry.
Till January 1st, I'm sorry. With the exception of bagged meters, and then that is only for two hours.
It's essentially the parking garage is free during this time.
Yeah. And the other thing that I need to make everybody aware of is our rate change as provided by Athens City Code 50102. We are advising customers of a 3% increase in Athens City water rates effective January 1st of 2012. The increase is a result of the need to cover inflationary increases in the cost of labor, equipment, and supplies, as well as plan for replacing of aging meters and distribution lines. The 2012 increase is aligned with prior increases and continues the program of small incremental increases intended to avoid cumbersome debt loads, which in turn make it more difficult to operate in a fiscally responsible manner. A revised water rate sheet is attached for references, so we do have that coming up that we need to let everybody know to plan for, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Service Safety Director?
The city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday.
Did, did everybody hear that? City offices will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week, yes. Okay. I'm sorry, member Butler?
I do, the community center also has a different hours to speak as well.
Indeed, same, same days. Of course, you know, your police and fire will still be working and operating.
That's comfortable.
Your wireless people will be at the plants, so when I say that, I guess it's.
One will, one should work.
It will. Yes, the community center is closed Thursday and Friday.
Reports and communications from other elected officials, that'll be our treasurer, Mary Ann McFlure.
I have my third quarter reports of interest in, in the Banker Association. Our current total interest for the year is 174,436.01 compared to our projected 123,590. The projections were deliberately made low, as we all had no idea what we would have, and still, things are not moving up much, but I had a couple of long-term CDs that are still fine, so we'll definitely continue to exceed our, our projections.
Your, your strategy here, I think, is why you project low and exceed. We've just received this. Any council members have quick questions for their treasurer? Thank you. Let me make a motion that we accept the treasurer's report of the third quarter turning.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. We have accepted this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just one other comment on the debt and reserve fund policy. I believe you've all received a revised draft. I'd appreciate any questions or comments that you might have, so we can continue the discussion at any point. Please email me or call me.
Yes, I think we do want to deal with that within the next couple of meetings, before the end of the year. You are? Yes, and I also, I was reminded by Member Bain that the auditor has placed her October report in the council members, in the council office, and I move that we accept that report for October.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the auditor's report for October, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Law Director?
I have no word.
Okay. Have I missed anybody? Yes. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 10611, an ordinance approving, approving a planned unit development on Hickory Street and granting a variance, introduced by Councilmember Fall, who isn't here. Member Bain?
I move adoption of 0611.
Second.
10611, pardon me. Chris is away, taking care of some family business, and I think she asked me to do this, but if she didn't, someone else wants to step up and speak, feel free. We have a good use, transitional use on a relatively small piece of property in an R1 zone on Hickory Street, and we've looked at the plans, and I think there's not much to complain about in this particular case. But on the other hand, I am a little concerned about planned unit developments in R1 that aren't in such a good place, where there's a backyard with a steep slope with trees on it, and isolation and transition. But that will be taken care of, I hope, by the Planning Commission and future council. But this one's good, so that's why I moved to adopt.
Any other comments? Comments from the audience at this moment? No? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 10611, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign? This passes. Thank you. Ordinance 10811, an ordinance declaring property on Alexander Street no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and authorizing the mayor to donate these land parcels to the Athens County Habitat for Humanity. This one was introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 10811.
Second.
10811 is a follow-up, actually, to our CHIPS grant work, and one of the parts of that was that we were going to give this property, which is green space right now, and to allow Habitat to develop it, so we will have some low and moderate income housing within the city. And that is what's going on here. Pat Lang, our law director, was a little concerned earlier on, and so should something come up while we're discussing it, I'll may do something, but I think it's, I think we solved the problems as we discussed it. One of the things that I know that will be done, in addition to surveying where the, it is a platted subdivision, shouldn't be too bad for surveys, as compared to other places where it is bad, but I know Ken is talking about, Ken's talking about making sure that the drainage is done appropriately, and he has engineers on hand, I think, that I'm familiar with, that are experts on water, that can give them a hand for this, and they will see that it's done, because they have as much of an interest in keeping this house where it is as we do. So with that little caveat, I've sent it, I would like the rest of you to say whatever you'd like to say about it.
Any other comments? Council members? Oh, I'm sorry, Member Butler?
Thank you. I'd like to just add, echo what Member Bain has said, that we have received a number of Town Hall meetings, interest in assisting the creation of more housing for people that, perhaps homeless and/or low to moderate income, so I think this is an effort in the right direction.
I had a question for the Service Safety Director. Member Bain did mention that this is a platted subdivision, four lots on that hillside, I believe.
There are indeed, there are.
What have we decided?
Two associated with this transfer, and once the property has been surveyed and site-selected or what have you, we can always go back to adjust that, but two, two lots.
Two, okay.
And potentially, could you split one of those two, or would it?
I have to get in, check a little bit more closely. Ideally, when we looked at this property, we had hoped that we would have space to have a future build. This will indeed be the first Habitat for Humanity house within city limits, so I'm pretty excited about it.
As I was checking my memory banks, I remember there was one that was proposed up on Highland where the turn was, and then they discovered that the main pumper line from the water plant went right under it, and they said, oh, I guess that won't work. But that was one time, one that we had talked about donating at earlier times, so this one, I think, is okay.
Yeah, should be. There's also some thought about the property lots that we're retaining, retaining, it has a retaining wall, and there may be some developable issues with that anyway, so we'll just start with these two.
Okay. Any other comments regarding this building? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 10811, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay. This ordinance 10811 is passed. Ordinance 10911, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Athens, the City of Athens, Ohio, to execute an agreement with the Grand Vista Village LLC for a permanent utility easement, introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 10911.
Second.
10911 is coming to us at the request of the city engineer. I'm always happy when they have easements that are permanent and would potentially, even potentially, be available for use as a bike path. But this one is for the Grand Vista Village up in University Estates, and we're moving it forward. It was an agreement that was reached between the city and the developers of Grand Vista Village.
Comments? Questions? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 10911, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Again, this passes. Ordinance 11211, an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Bakun.
Thank you, President Sands. This ordinance appropriates $17,000 for the purchase of vehicle airbag lifts for the fire department. The old ones had outlived their usefulness and have been removed from the vehicles. So new ones are needed.
Comments? Questions? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 11211, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? We have passed ordinance 11211. Ordinance 11511, an ordinance declaring a city vehicle no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 11511.
Second.
And this is for a vehicle that the city is no longer using. It was a 1981, it is a 1981 Porsche that was donated to the city, and we find it no longer useful for the DARE program, and it is to be disposed of by sealed bid with no trade-in.
Comments regarding this ordinance? No? All those in favor of ordinance 11511, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, this is passes. And ordinance 11611, an ordinance amending the Athens City sign regulations, introduced actually by Member Fall. Anybody want to? Do we have any comments, questions? Speaking as a council member, again, I did make a note, a comment earlier, that I think once the ordinance is effected 30 days from its date of passage, if it passes, that's when we will really see the enforcement that we're concerned about. So if it doesn't happen, if it proves problematic, then I certainly would see a, a change happening in this ordinance. Member Nysley?
I would move adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, ordinance 11611, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Same sign?
Could I just make one comment?
Yes, now, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just want to say that I am just so impressed by the hard work that went into this ordinance, all the compromising and all the hours that were devoted to this. I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I think we had the ayes had.
Yes.
So this ordinance of 11611, amending Athens City sign regulations, passes six to zero. I believe we have one ordinance for second reading, which is, yes.
Was there an opportunity for the public to communicate or talk on that right now, or before we voted, or no? Was that necessary or not necessary?
We had a, the public hearing.
Earlier, right, which I missed.
And the public.
Commented at that moment.
Commented earlier, yes. Okay. Ordinance for second reading, it just is, is read for the second time. Ordinance 11711, an ordinance amending Athens City zoning code Title 23 to include off-street bicycle requirements. Do we need to say bicycle parking requirements? Just, okay, I guess not.
I think it is bicycle parking. If you look at the original, the original, it is, it's just a typo, it's bicycle parking.
It, I think it's made clear in the ordinance. Okay. Okay, we have several ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 11911, an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance, I'll go ahead and introduce that. This is an ordinance that's moving some money around, end of the year mostly. We are, section one decreases by, the Transportation Assistance Fund decreased by $20,000, and moving it, I'm sorry, transit, moving it from transaction class 500 and moving it into transaction class 200, by 300, the same amount. And this is moving money, I'm sorry. Did I, I didn't ask that in the beginning. We have Service Safety Director, want to make a comment?
Well, I'm not sure council schedule is, my understanding, we're probably going to meet the next few weeks in a row, but we will need this money in place in order to meet our personnel, our, meet payroll.
So if we don't, I'm sorry.
I guess if not tonight, I would be asking for suspension next Monday at second reading, if that's more palatable.
Okay, we probably, we, next week is a committee meeting night, we could, we could certainly schedule a special session and read this along with other ordinances, and suspend it at that time if necessary.
Thank you.
Okay. So the move, the money moving within transportation is to move money into the personnel line to, to, to finish the end of the year. In section two, we're also further amending the unappropriated balance, $400,000 is moved to the general fund to pay the balance on our new fire pumper ladder truck, and $15,000 to the recreation fund to cover personnel costs, another $15,000 to the Community Center Fund to cover year-end personnel costs, $59,000 in addition to the Transportation Assistant Fund to pay McDonald Transit and other, the fuel bill, fuel bills through the end of the year. This is our city bus system. $16,000 to the sewer administration fund for year-end personnel costs, and $15,000 to the internal service fund to cover year-end personnel costs. So this is money that we already have appropriated, and we're moving it into personnel lines. Member Bain?
Yes, and the one thing I think that is important to note in this is that we are moving money from the unappropriated balance in many cases, and so when people talk about a healthy carryover, is, health has been slightly impaired by these shifts, as you can see. So not all of in the general fund, but it's a fair chunk of change. I guess I'd like to know why sewer administration fund has $16,000 and water and solid waste don't, so I'm glad you're going to wait a week.
We're actually asking the same questions in terms of personnel costs and looking closely, even at the internal services. And I guess I would just like to say again to council that there probably would be another appropriations change needed by the end of the year, as we're just wrapping up these end-of-year items that would, of course, need suspended and approved.
Well, the budget too. But the problem I have is many, almost everybody who's in sewer administration is partially there and not in the other two. So I guess what I'd like to know is why did that one get diminished and the other two not? That's my, my basic question, but this, here, here goes some of the healthy carryover. And we got to pay it, but it's, it's there.
So.
Real money.
Real money for personnel costs. So we will be reading this again next week. We might have, we might have some additions, corrections at that time. Okay?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
I do have a question, and this is just my, not fully understanding the process, but section two calls for $400,000 being appropriated to the general fund for the balance of the ladder truck. So is it that even though our discussion last week was that, that we would probably borrow the money, we're still needing to appropriate it? Okay, got it.
We are borrowing, and then we need to.
And then we'll, okay.
But we, remember, we had this other money in the capital fund, so we're moving it over here so we can expend it for the ladder truck.
Okay.
That's, that's what it was raised for, yes.
Okay.
Other questions regarding this? Thank you. Ordinance 12011, an ordinance amending, ordinance 03211, authorizing a contract extension of the city's third-party health insurance administrator, members of the Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Bain, you want to talk about that?
Yes, we, last time, because we were going through transition, moved slowly with respect to changing, you did just give something? Yes.
Go ahead.
We're doing 121, right? Okay, because I was looking at 123.
Yes.
Okay, so we rolled UMR, our third-party administrator, for a year, our contract with them, and the new personnel person, who will soon be called a human resources person, is going to use the first of the year as the starting point for the contract, and she would like to have all of the contracts come into play. She found that she can work very well with UMR, has gotten many good ideas. When we didn't roll it for more than a year, it was just my intention at least, I don't know how the rest of you felt, that whoever's in charge should really have a chance to make the contract, you know, to the person they work with most, that's why. We only rolled it for a year, there were talk about how much. There were talk about how much it was going to cost. It looks like it's not going to be, we'll find out what the, what the cost for that little bit of conservatism was. But anyway, that's basically what's going on. You notice we have a number of requirements, seven. They have to tell us that they're going to be merged or acquired or whatever. And the city should incorporate language that protects the city in event of default embezzlement or errors by the TPA. That's a good statement, there's a should. Now, I hope somebody does it. I don't know how we would do it, but there it is. Probably not very difficult at all. A clause in the agreement that the city authorities have access to city records, city treasurer, and so, and everything basically is spelled out there in the processing of the managed care that the third-party administrator does for us with this ordinance.
I'm sorry, that was ordinance 12111. In flipping pages, I flipped too far. Now we're on, we're going to go back to ordinance 12011, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide, and declaring an emergency. Member Bain, please explain why we do this.
We, I could say we do this every year. It's almost $300,000. It's a very large amount of money. $14,000 comes from the sewer fund. Water fund is a big user of salt and also fluoride, and they're, especially salt, though. And then you can see the street fund is the other place where we're going to be expending this. It's a, something that's been done, we used to call it housekeeping, but we don't anymore.
And of course, the street department is using salt.
Four roads, yes.
Comments or questions? Have I confused everybody by my flipping?
Yeah, you did a good job.
I'm sorry. Here we are, ordinance 12211, an ordinance authorizing a contract to provide a third-party administrator for the city's prescription drug plan and declaring an emergency. Member Bain, you want to do that again?
Yes, I'll do that again. We are, this is one of several ordinances that we will be looking at. We have a separate drug prescription plan. Up until now, it has not been managed very effectively by our previous vendor. It didn't cost very much, but we weren't paying way too much for drugs, I believe, that the current personnel, human resources person has pursued and with the help of people in the city who are familiar with prescription drug plans, and has come up with a reasonable alternative that will not provide such a notch in our budget at this point. Also, we had a hard time when we were audited last time, getting the third-party administrator to cough up the records. So that's another reason why this is, we're abandoning the old and going to a new one on the first of the year. Drugs. We're paying a couple, well, $3,000, $4,000 per unit for drugs, and I think it should go down with this. At least, I hope so.
Any councilmembers having questions, comments? Service Safety Director?
Once again, I would request if there, I have to give a 30-day notice to the current prescription plan provider, so I am indeed trying to attempt to have that where I can get notice by November 30th.
So we will have a special session, and this will be up? Is that going to be?
We'll have this to our special session.
Please, thank you.
Please.
Saving money, it's good.
Ordinance 12311, an ordinance amending ordinance 5411 and Athens City Code Title 5, water and sewer regulations, introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, 123 was a slip of the pen somewhere. $10 per square foot for every 250,000 square feet or part thereof. Replace the previous language, which was totally incorrect. I remember saying, boy, that's a bargain. And I never really tumbled to the fact that it was a mistake. So at this time, I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 12311.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is that we're getting into primary permitting season, and I think it's good to have the full amount assessed for every square foot of developed space of impermeable surface, not what we have right now.
Okay. Member Bain has asked for suspension of the rules. We're voting now on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 12311 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move adoption of 12311.
Second.
Which I talked about before. We want that impermeable surface to be charged for stormwater taps and connections.
Excuse me. This time, we're voting on accepting the ordinance, that the, which amends and corrects this mistake. All those in favor of the ordinance 12211 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Ordinance is passed under suspension of the rules. Okay, we're moving on to ordinance 12411, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Hawking, with Hawking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, as the designated grantee to administrator Athens Public Transit and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Nysli.
Thank you, Mr. President. You might recall that last week, we talked briefly about this. The Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Organization is the group that responded to a request for qualifications that the city issued earlier this year. And that request was to ask, solicit assistance with managing the Athens transit. It's been currently been accomplished in-house, and that's a complicated task and takes a lot of time, and it's primarily been out of the mayor's office. HAPCAP, as it's known, did respond. They, we reviewed the qualifications. We also know of their good track record with managing the Logan Transit with the Mobility Manager Program that the City of Athens applied for for federal money last year, and they also managed the Go Bus System, as Mayor Wyer mentioned last week. So this ordinance would authorize the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding to work with HAPCAP to manage our Athens transit system. And councilmembers with their agenda tonight have a copy of the draft of the memorandum of understanding, and it basically spells out the goals, the scope of services, the requirements, and the reporting for it.
So we have dealt with all our ordinances. Now we're down to announcements in other businesses, in other business. We, we know that we're going to have a special session next week to deal with at least two ordinances that we might want to amend and probably want to suspend. There may be other additions to that, to that agenda. Are there any committees that feel that they need to have committee sessions during this meeting? I'll speak up finance. We're certainly going to talk about budget, budgetary issues. So finance and personnel will have, have the meeting. Any other committees? Possibly?
We might be emailing the clerk midweek with a request, so.
For?
Except the agenda has to go out.
By Wednesday or Thursday?
Yeah, I will be here on Wednesday.
Tomorrow, okay. Thank you.
He's being cast.
Okay. Other business? I just want to make an announcement that there is a public hearing in these chambers on December 5th, which I believe is a Monday, at 7:00, regarding the Go Bus, our intercity, intercity transit bus system, and the plans for it in 2012. So that will be Monday, December 5th, in these chambers at 7:00. This is the, this is the long distance, Athens, Columbus, Cincinnati, with connections, we hope, to Cleveland. I don't hear any other committees leading. So earlier in our evening, we had several members of the public who wanted to speak about, about our sign regulations. Now we are going to ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak about issues that were not covered tonight. If you want to bring anything to city council's attention, please come up, speak. Three minutes. Tell us your name and address, please.
Yes, Patrick Dockerty, 22 Hudson. The only thing I actually wanted to clarify was I didn't hear a summary for the ordinance amending City Code Title 23 for off-street bicycle requirements. I just was curious what that was about. Heard some chuckles, and then that was pretty much it, and then people moved along. Is there?
That, this ordinance was up for second reading, and that's really all that happens. It was introduced last week. This is putting forth some city requirements regarding off-street parking for bicycles on rental properties.
Okay, just rental properties only?
Member Bain has a.
I have a copy of this, and we'll ask the clerk to give you one.
Excellent.
And we will have a public hearing on it next week? Is that when it's going to be? Or have we had it on this change to the code?
We have.
We have had one.
Okay, so we'll get you a copy.
Okay, so planning commission.
It was held, oh yeah, it says October 17th, 2011, and the bicycle parking requirements, and you'll be able to see.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Always ask these things.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Patrick, you can do.
Example of why we ask the, ask this at the end of every meeting. Anybody else have any comments? And we are adjourned at 8:08.